I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we call the roll, please?
Certainly. McCumber.
Here.
Arshaf.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Dool.
Here.
Gustanelli.
Here.
Muckel.
Here.
Corn.
Here. Our president accounted for. First item on our amended agenda is public comment. Anyone who would care to address the board, please come to the microphone if you'd be so kind as to give us your name and address.
Hello, I'm Tim Wade. I live at 3832 Jefferson Avenue in Traverse City in Garfield Township. I'm here to just briefly mention the letter that I hope you all received, maybe you've had a chance to read, regarding the Jefferson Avenue Special Assessment District project. For the reasons I outlined in the letter, namely the significant cost increase from what we were originally told by the County Road Commission earlier this year, and when I was in front of you in October, asking you to consider this, and also asking you to also give some consideration to those that live on the street that might not be able to afford the cost and what the regulations are regarding hardship cases. And we very much appreciated you passing that, approving the SAD, but at this point, for the reasons I've outlined, myself and the other two individuals that worked with me on gathering the signatures on the petition, would like to request that the project be put on hold or give it a pause for the time being because of the significant increases in costs that we've just learned about, like within the last week to 10 days. So to give us a little bit more time to get our heads together and figure out what next steps ought to be. Appreciate your consideration for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
Hello, my name is Ben Castiglione. I live at 5937 Dover Lane. You'll be considering my application for the Planning Commission or CPA. If you guys have any questions during that time, please ask me or after. Thank you.
And anyone else for public comment? We will close public comment and come back to the board for review and approval of the amended agenda and any statements of conflict of interest. The conflicts?
Make a motion we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Yep.
Motion and support to approve the amended agenda. Are any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is the consent calendar.
Calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therfrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, minutes, November 14th, 2023, regular meeting as amended. November 14th, 2023, study session, and December 5th, 2023, study session. Recommend approval. Bills, general fund, $430,462. Two cents. Recommend approval. Gordy Frazier, Developers Escrow Fund, Stormwater Reviews, Utility Plan Review, Oversight and Closeout, $23,383. General Utilities, $24,570, and Special Assessment District, $290. Total, $48,243. Recommend approval. Consideration of intent to create Special Assessment District for resurfacing of Ridgeview Court and schedule public hearing on January 9th, 2024, Resolution 2023-35T. Recommend approval. Consideration of adoption of poverty hardship exemption policy, Resolution 2023-36T. Recommend approval. Consideration of approval of computerized tax rule, Resolution 2023-34T. Recommend approval. Consideration of RLS Professional Aquatic Consulting Services Contract for Silver Lake. Recommend approval. Consideration of budget amendment to increase 253 Assessing Department by $25,000, Resolution 2023-50T. Recommend approval. Consideration of budget amendment to increase 720 Community Department by $8,000, Resolution 2023-51T. Recommend approval. And consideration of request for approval of temporary employee to assist the Treasurer's Department in taking tax or other forms of payments. Recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion?
3F.
3F. Any others? Is there any member of the public who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Or staff? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item F.
Support.
Support.
All right. We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Gustanelli.
Yes.
Dool.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Arshaf.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
And Corn.
Yes.
Next item, items removed from the consent calendar, the item F, Mr. Dool.
Can you explain what that is, for sure?
It is a contract with an aquatics consulting company to remove mill foil from Silver Lake.
This is the mill foil one?
Yep.
Okay, okay. And that's paid regardless if they treat, or they will treat?
They will treat.
They will treat, okay.
This is for the cost of the consultant who measures the amount and then directs the applicator.
Of where to treat?
Right. They've been doing it for quite a while and with the concurrence of the Blair Township Board, our board, and the Silver Lake Association.
Share the lake.
Correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve 3F.
Support.
We have a motion and support for item 3F on the consent calendar. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is correspondence. We have a letter from Brad Olson regarding the Olson Foundation's intention on their property, and as Mr. Wade mentioned earlier, his letter. We'll probably have discussion about both items a little later. But first, reports. County Commissioners' report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brad Jewitt, Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners, Vice Chair, District 4.
Lauren Flynn, Grand Traverse County Commissioner, District 2. We've been pretty busy with the budget with five new commissioners. I think we've been diligently working and reviewing what needs to be done, so we are having a special meeting tomorrow to review the budget that has been presented, so there'll be more from that. We also heard from Monson last week about an update about the Mental Wellness Center. It sounds like Phase 1 should be finished by end of 2024 and really prioritizing youth beds in 2025.
That's correct.
Yeah. We also heard from Bonnie with the voting plan for Grand Traverse Lane. I want to say thank you for all the hard work that you've put into your part here in Garfield Township. I know all the clerks of Grand Traverse County really work together to ensure that the next, you know, the primary in February and moving forward is going to go as smoothly as possible. So we really do greatly appreciate our clerks over county. And then we had a great conversation about the new pilot policy, which we are putting one in place. Ours was not quite ready, and we really want to take time to put the correct policy in place because it is confusing and a lot of different pieces moving together. So we worked together, we decided together that we would put that on hold until next, and the policy ad hoc would make that a priority to work on.
And just to touch base on that, we did have two pilot programs in front of us, or projects in front of us this last week, and it is a relatively new program amongst the state. Well, it is a new program this year amongst the state, but so we did not have a policy in place or anything, but by us not taking action was actually taking action because these pilot programs will go through and everything. But in the future, as Commissioner Flynn mentioned, we are going to be creating a policy. The Policy Review Committee is going to come up with a policy on how to address these pilot programs as they come to us in the future and everything. So that will, that first meeting with that group will not be until the first or second week of January, so we're still a little bit out on doing that and everything. Just two things I wanted to add to was recently here, just in the last week or 10 days, there is a new road commission manager, Dan Watkins was the intern, maybe you guys have already heard this, but they did appoint him as the new road manager and everything, so there's a manager in place there. And then just one other thing, pavilions update. For a while there, you know, pavilions has been underwater, and they currently still are, but there are funds coming in from the feds that have been approved, and it could take up to a year for all them funds to come in to make the county whole and everything. But over the last couple of months, they have gone from a one-star rating to a three-star rating, and with new leadership there and everything, the quality of care and just everything as a whole is starting to come back up to a higher level and definitely will benefit the residents that are residing there and their families and everything. So as that unfolds, we'll keep you updated on that, but currently they do still owe us somewhere, I don't know the exact number because it moves at times, but right around that $7 million, and owe us, me and the county and everything. But their funds have been approved for various different things at the federal level, so now we're just waiting for them to come in, so.
I have a question, Brad.
Sure.
Go ahead, Noel.
So will the, will the pavilions be flush with the money that is coming from the federal government? Is there enough there to make them flush?
Yes, from what we're hearing, the numbers will make us whole, and the projection right now is a year from now that they will definitely be in the black and stuff. So we know that's a ways out. We know that they owe the county approximately $7 million, but there are plans in place and everything like that, so we will be made whole and everything. So if that changes one way or another, we will definitely inform you guys, just so you know and everything, too.
That was exactly my question. Thank you.
Great minds.
Anybody else? I'm going to run to Blair, or actually drive, because it is kind of a long one otherwise.
It's dark out.
But anyway, I'm assuming that we probably won't have a meeting at the end of the month here, but because that is the 26th, but I could be wrong. But if not, have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everyone, and look forward to seeing yous in the next year.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Oh, and like always, my contact information, as hers, is on the county website. If anybody has any questions, comments, or anything, email us, call us, do whatever, and we'll do whatever we need to to get back to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Perfect.
Next item is the construction report.
Well, good evening, everyone. Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier. In your packet is the December 6th report. A few highlights. Just had a really good meeting with DPW to go through the booster station design over on Cedar Run, and also talking with contractors, getting them amped up as far as their timelines and schedules of putting projects out for bid, including this one, just to get some good feedback. Been doing a lot of year-end with DPW, which indirectly has impact with you guys and the aspects that, we went through all the master spec updates. I have received, as of today, all the feedback from the other township engineers. Integrating those, going to take that back to the Board of Public Works for their consent, and then it'll be forthcoming to all of respective townships related to water and sewer technical specs and details. So we'll have updated shiny ones, which is exciting for me. Other notes of interest, Silver Lake Sewer, another one that we're going to be planning on rebidding, intended in January, and hopefully this time get some bids. Let's see, Water Sewer Extension, Expansion to the South, Olson's Property. There was a letter in your packet, and I believe we're going to talk about that a little later, but consistent with past discussions, if this is something that the board is agreeable to, well, we would like to probably in January come back, Gordy Frazier, for a booster station designed to accommodate that extension. And with my intent, anyway, it's putting that out for bids at the same time as the Cedar Run Booster Station and making it a nice package and desirable to bidding contractors. Is what my thought process is, anyway. River East, had a great meeting with staff to just look at future forecasts, and the board's interested, definitely want to develop that park out in full capacity. So I just finished wrapping up the final concept layout drawings. We now work with a landscape architect, which is really exciting, so I sent that to her to make basically an engineering concept drawing look like a real pretty drawing, as you can appreciate. So I'm excited to release that to you guys, to have something that you can put on your township website and share with your members at large and your residents. So to have a lot better than some blocks that engineers tend to draw for concept drawings. So that's exciting, and an updated cost estimate to go with that. The Phase 3 is same as Silver Lake Sewer, that's going to be going out for bid in January as well, now that M.D.S. threw a lot of their bid letting with contractors. That's the feedback we're getting. Any other things? I actually just got Wendy Hills Utility Plans to review, which came out of nowhere. So they're ready to move ahead with their next phase, so I'm put that in our schedule to look at utilities. Beta, we're working on closeout documents. We did receive a minor amendment to look at site plan revisions related to TC Housing, which we've got on our schedule for next week to look at as far as stormwater and utility impacts. Britain, expansions, inspections almost done this week, and we'll work through closeout. Same thing with Burmley Hills and Burmley Meadows, they're out installing water main in light of the weather that we have, so they're taking advantage of that, which is good. And I do know sidewalk trails are going to be discussed later on the agenda, and then a few stormwater reviews. But I would entertain any questions this board has for me.
Apparently you're off the hook so far.
Right. Well, I'm not going anywhere. I'll be here. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the GT Metro Fire Report.
Nope, it's the Sheriff's Report.
Oh.
Good evening, Roy Rasko. Just looking at these stats, and I couldn't believe how many traffic accidents Garfield Township has, but then looking at last month, it's pretty similar with 104 last month and 112 this month. Looks like the patrol was able to write 82 tickets over the last month. They handled 16 injury accidents, 96 property damage accidents, and there's two OWI arrests. Right now, we're down eight positions. All of the Garfield Township positions, except for one, right now are full. And that's Amanda Spot. We'll be looking at what we're going to do with that next couple of weeks. Jessica's still at the school, doing a great job. She's been super busy. The traffic car, we have not had to eliminate that spot, and he spends a lot of time in Garfield Township, and that's probably why there's been 82 tickets written in the township over the last month. And Steve Gore's back from maternity leave, which is great. The guys were early hurting without Steve, so he was gone for the last three weeks, but he's back as of yesterday, so everybody's happy again. Unless there's any questions.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Parker.
Good evening, everyone. Pat Parker, Metro Fire Chief. Haven't been here in a couple of months, and I apologize for that. Lot going on at the department this time of year. In your packets are the Garfield EMS incidents, Metro's EMS incidents for the month, and as well as our total calls. In Garfield Township, we ran 319 EMS calls in November. Again, falls, difficulty breathing, and cardiac arrests lead those. When looking at total counts for the month, 473 calls for Metro, and of those, 353 of them were here in Garfield Township. Again, medical leads that as well. And then in there, of course, is the pinwheel showing the calls by station and the calls by township. Some things that is happening at Metro right now is we presented our 2024 strategic plan to the board and got their buy-in from that, heard a little bit of, they heard a little bit from us of where we think we're going next year. We went over to Pierce Manufacturing in Appleton to look at our new fire truck. Unfortunately, a truck that we thought was going to be here in April is not going to be here now until September, so it gives Kim a little bit of time to figure out financing. We hope to write a grant, again, through Cherokee Electric and get 0% interest on that truck. But a truck that we ordered two years ago, the price of the truck's up about $160,000. And trucks right now are out four years. So trying to get a manufacturer to give you a price on a truck four years out, it's tough. And it's also tough for me to come to you all and say, hey, can you buy this truck at this price four years out? But that's what's happening in our industry. We unfortunately had an employee leave us to go back down to the Grand Rapids area. She was here for a year, worked out well. Her husband got a new job, so we were able to move a part-timer into that position. Probably recent calls of interest, we had a call on Hughes Drive where we actually had a person that was sleeping in a recycling dumpster and got dumped into a GFL truck. The driver made another call, made another stop, heard someone yelling, and sure enough, there's a person inside the compactor. So they drove the truck back to Hughes, opened up the back, and then our firefighters and their help, we pulled the gentleman out, and he's okay, had a broken leg, but, and apparently they say industry-wide, this does happen, but you know, those are something that, that's a first for me, as after 40 years is going on, somebody that was in the back of a garbage truck. We had a pretty significant fire on Monson Avenue from late October, lightning strike. So our weather, sometimes I scratch my head on those. Brian and Fire Prevention have been pretty busy. We did 33 plan reviews last week, and it probably doesn't surprise John or anybody here that we're growing and we have a lot of construction going on in our area. Brian, we've had, you know, a fair amount of dumpster fires in the last month, month and a half, but none of them are related. So I know that was something that we asked, are they all related? And we don't think they, we don't think that they are. Jen's been busy, of course, with all her classes in public ed. Probably the one that we're really proud of is the Matter of Balance class that we do at the YMCA. I know you've heard me talk about that in the past, but you know, we have over 100 seniors that are going through this, and for us, falls are our biggest EMS call, and if we can teach people how not to fall, and then if they do fall, how can they get back up? And we're having some great success with that. We used to go on all the lockdowns at the schools that are in our three townships, and the TCAP's asked us to just start coming on fire drills, and so we've been doing that and have been having great relations with the teachers and the students that when the fire alarm goes off, you need to take it pretty serious. And the lockdown drills are being handled by the Sheriff's Department now. We're, you're going to be seeing more of our billboard campaigns for the year, Christmas trees, electrical, and we're sharing these billboards around town with Blair, the city, and Peninsula Township. So those are all being shared, and the billboard company gives us a pretty good break as well. We are, of course, year, we're starting year two of our union contract, and every year we have a wage reopener, and so the board was gracious enough to come up with a 3.5 wage increase for the year. The union did agree to that, and so our contractual obligations with the union are complete there. I think a lot of you have read lately about the Birth of Us, and you know that we've been trying for years to try to get a new station in Acme, and we were going to partner with, at least the board asked us to look at it, partnering with Acme Township on the Birth of Us School, and that Acme pulled out of that project. And if you read the paper today, the Strathmore Group put in a, an offer $500,000 over asking, so the board did approve that. And so we're looking around. Acme Township did put a buy-sell agreement on building a couple doors to the north, which may allow us to maybe move more into where the township was, but our board is asking us to come back with all of our options on that, which we will in the future. And then lastly, I don't think I have officially told the board, but you probably have all heard that I'm going to retire at the end of March, March 31st, and the board did go out for a search firm, and wow, 40 applicants have applied for the fire chief position. And of those 40, they have asked the supervisors, the personnel committee, to look at 20 of them. So 20 out of 40, and so they've got the daunting task of looking at interviews and reading narratives and trying to come up with a manageable, we can't interview 20, but I don't know what your marching orders are, Chuck, but eight? Eight people, 10 people? So the board, Personnel Committee has a meeting here coming up to suggest what number of people and what people should get an interview. They hope to interview those parties in the middle of June, or middle of January, excuse me, and hopefully announce a fire chief by February 1st, which would be good, and hopefully I would be able to work with that person, you know, for a month before I retire. So it's been a pleasure working with all of you, and I'll be here for three more months, three, a little bit more than that. It's been a good year at Metro, been a safe year at Metro, and we appreciate your support. So Happy New Year, Merry Christmas as well.
Thank you.
All right.
Any questions for Chief Parker?
Any of those applicants within the ranks?
I'm not positive, but I believe we did have, one person did apply, yeah. And I don't know where that person made in the cut, if they made the cut or not, but hopefully the board will take a look at the internal candidate as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, our MMR report.
Hello, Amy Fairchild with MMR Operations Manager. It's been a little while since I've seen you all. Thank you for your understanding. We had some family issues come up back in October, so appreciate your understanding there. For the month of November, we had 361 medical calls in Garfield Township. As Chief Parker said, falls came out on the top there, followed very closely by sick person, and then it catered on down from there. We were involved with the gentleman that took a ride in the trash truck as well. Thankfully, he is doing much better now. With MMR, we've had some very good, positive changes, positive, positive things to report. We have two new paramedics that are working with us. One was an EMT, took our paramedic class through us, passed everything, went through our training process, which was about three months long, and is on her own as a paramedic now in Garfield Township. And then Justin Davenport went downstate to fly in the helicopter, did that for about nine months, and they decided they missed Traverse City and came back. And I'm excited to say that he now works for us as well, also out at Station 12. And so we've got two more paramedics working, which is a huge help for us, a huge help for our staffing. We've also hired seven more EMTs, and we have two paramedic classes going on right now. One will be complete in June of next year, and the other one will be complete in, I believe, it's September of next year. MMR has 10 employees between the two classes, so with a whole lot of luck and crossing our fingers, we'll get them through paramedic class as well. We do have an EMT Academy starting in Manastee in March. It'll be open to the entire area. You do not have to be an employee of MMR to take the class, so we're hoping to fill kind of a bigger need down south of our area. But we do have quite a few people from Traverse City, Garfield Township, that are interested in taking that class. So they're taking applications now, and we'll start the interviews for that in January. And then the other thing that we're going to be starting to offer at the beginning of the year is called a PHOTS class. It's first on the scene, and it's a class open to the public that we'll be offering for free, and it shows hands-only CPR, how to control bleeding. And it shows hands-only CPR, how to control bleeding, and how to apply tourniquets. And it's about a two- to three-hour class. Anybody can attend, children on up. We recommend about ten, twelve-years-old to be able to have the strength, the physical strength to do CPR and things like that. But you can bring younger ones as well. So as we get those classes set up, we'll make sure to send the information out to you guys. If you guys want to send it to anyone that might be interested in that. But we'll be holding those classes throughout the area, hopefully to equip citizens to help us out more. Is there any questions that I could answer for you all?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear that. The paramedic program is working.
I am too. It's been very exciting to watch. They're all doing their ride-alongs with us right now. So when you, if you happen to need an ambulance or see us riding around and see three or four people coming out of a truck, they're students, it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Planning Department Monthly Report for December.
Reports in your packet, just wanted to highlight three development projects. As Jennifer mentioned, we do have a minor amendment to the Beta Traverse City Housing Commission PUD. This is basically an adjustment in terms of the housing units that are out there. The number of buildings remains the same, number of units remains the same. It's just a slight adjustment. They also are including an addition of a clubhouse. So that kicks in the minor amendment requirement that the Planning Commission will be reviewing tomorrow evening. Also, there was a conceptual review for Culver Meadows on 1611 Northwest Silver Lake Road. That project is moving forward with the actual conditional rezoning review process. So that they're looking to add in a large adult foster care facility for no more than twenty adults, as well as a childcare center, which is intended to support and provide resources for the employees of that facility, along with the existing Culver Meadows senior living facility. The other item that we have is we received the application for the Traverse Symphony Orchestra. We locate in a portion of the Curling Center, which is the former Kmart property. This is in the back part of the building. So they'll be creating a new entrance on the west side of that building. So right now, there's just a simple door there that's going to actually open up. And it will add to the build-out and repurpose of that facility. But there is additional space yet. I think between the Symphony Orchestra and the Curling Center is roughly about half of the space. So there's still a lot of more space to be reused at the Kmart building. That's it.
Any questions for John?
How does the public give feedback on the draft master plan? I see it's on the website and says that the public's encouraged to provide comments and feedback. How does that happen?
Well, they can do it. We've received emails, phone calls. They're welcome to come into the office as well, we're always available. It was in the newsletter, and we've gotten some responses through that as well. We've had some inquiries, people. And it's really helpful because at this point, it's a, it's a draft, and this is, this is the best time to get that input. But easily, just, yeah, give us the Planning Department a call, email, stop in, love to hear from everybody.
Any other questions? Thank you, John. Next is the Parks and Recreation Report.
Good evening, Sean Keogh, Garfield Township. You all have a packet, so I'll just highlight a few things. Silver Lake, we will be blocking off the small parking lots soon to kind of lower the cost of plowing. And they don't get used a ton this time of year, so it, there's no sense in plowing those. So there'll be ample parking left for other spots, or in other spots. We did order some new kiosk posters for the park, and we're starting to do that with some of the other parks to kind of merge those in and, and replace the ones that have been there for a long time with the Conservation District label on them. So it's got new contact information on, you know, contacting Derek and I for parks-related needs. So those are starting to take place. With the Commons, obviously, it's constant tree removal occasionally. River East, we've replaced one foot bridge that was in bad shape, and that's gotten a lot of good comments already. And we purchased wood for a second one, a little bit further down the trail that also needs to be replaced. As Jennifer said, we met with her regarding the future phases of that development down there. I did walk some proposed trails through that, and we mapped it with some GIS technology to kind of get a snail trail through there as to how much boardwalk and so forth we might need down the road going through some of those wetlands. Boardman Valley, we met with pickleball presidents, co-presidents, I guess, there's two of them. And I'll touch base on that in a second. And we also met with Grand Traverse Band, their Fisheries Division, for a potential area along the river there, using our parkland to store a large trailer. They want, they want to do a long-term, like, when I say long-term, potentially twenty-year project of putting a trailer next to the river that will filter Boardman River water in and through the, through the trailer. And then that will kind of imprint sturgeon that are in the trailer, baby sturgeon that are in the trailer. And that way, when the sturgeon, twenty years from now, are mature enough to reproduce, they obviously hone back in on, on being imprinted on the Boardman River, and she'll, will hopefully return to the Boardman River to spawn. So it's a big project on their end to kind of reintroduce the sturgeon, lake sturgeon into the Boardman River for spawning purposes. Miller Creek, pretty much status quo there. We've, between Miller Creek and Kids Creek, we've posted some invasive species signs regarding New Zealand mud snails that are little invasive guys that are creating havoc in a lot of trout streams around Michigan. And it's just kind of a warning and notification to trout fishermen and so forth that wade the streams, that they need to, you know, maybe clean off their boots and so forth after every visit to some of these streams that are infested with these things, so they're not spreading. Buffalo Ridge Trail, they were, Tard assisted us, had a volunteer group that was very helpful in removing a lot of autumn olive bushes. And they're going to continue to do that, obviously, as, as weather permits. They're probably going to take a whole, you know, take a little break right now because of the weather. And the snow removal has started for safe routes to school. So that is the Parks Report. And back to the pickleball discussion that I briefly mentioned. I know Derek talked to a couple of you. I'll just read through this briefly if you haven't had time to look at it. This memo is fairly new as of today. Staff met with co-presidents from TAPA this fall. One of the requests was to ask the township if they would assist in the cost to resurface the courts at the Boardman River Valley site, the South YMCA. Staff has reviewed the bids for the repairs slash resurfacing that TAPA board obtained. The courts have not been resurfaced since their installation over six years ago. Some of the surfaces are worn through, and there are some cracks and heaving that need to be addressed. The worn-out spots make the court slippery. The two quotes obtained were $40,000 and $45,000 from local contractors, and TAPA was attempting to get a third quote from a downstate company. The new co-presidents have been very easy to work with, and they're very communicative with the township staff. TAPA has purchased an AED to have available at the courts, and they're also trying to fundraise for a drinking fountain, security cameras on site if the site allows. And then on that note, the security cameras were brought up at the Parks Meeting, and there was a little hesitation on that, so that would need further discussion as to, you know, is it, would it be right for a private entity to put a security camera on a, you know, public park, so to speak? So that would be something that would need some further discussion, if that's something that they actually can fund in the long run. TAPA informed staff that they estimate about a hundred pickleballers, users a day are down there in the summer, and about fifty percent or more of them are township residents. While the average pickleball player age nationwide is thirty-eight, the average age at the courts at the Boardman River Valley is fifty, fifty years old or higher. I just wanted to present this to the board for discussion on how much, if any, would the township be willing to assist with the repair and resurfacing of the pickleball courts? Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Are we going to, before we make a decision on helping, are we going to see these bids?
I think it's, at this point, I think we're just asking, is it something you think we would entertain? Whether it's five percent or ninety-five percent, is there a?
It's kind of getting the temperature of the board on where this.
Oh, okay.
They're obviously not going to resurface till next year anyways, right? I mean.
Yeah, they're not, they're not going to do anything this year, yeah.
I wouldn't, I would entertain the thought of helping them, and just, I would like to see the bids like Denise asked for and look at them. And then a comment on those cameras, I'm thinking, if they funded them, why can't our Garfield Township staff obtain the data? We, we control the data images.
Well, I think it was more of a interest to have a live feed going down there to see court conditions, how busy they were, as well as a security entity to it. But I think a lot of it more was directed, and I need to email them and find that out. But I was talking to Derek about it, and it seemed like it was more of a, you know, are they wet? Is there a lot of leaves on them? Is there, are all the courts full right now? That kind of thing where, you know, where with, there's two or three, maybe more of those security cameras around. I know NMC's one where you can look out at the bay twenty-four hours a day and see if it's calm enough to go fishing or whatever you want to look at it for. But I think that's kind of the direction they were going with that. But the Parks Commission, Krista Good brought up, you know, he, he had some concerns over private club, putting cameras on them.
Yeah, the legality of it too was a concern of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
But I think they also have, if I remember correctly, I think Derek was mentioning that they did mention that they, they may, don't quote me on this, but they may have cameras like at Peninsula Township for this, at their pickleball courts for the same thing, so. Yes, ma'am.
So is TAPA interested in doing fundraising to do this resurfacing? How much money do they think they can raise?
I don't know that they are, the, the two presidents are brand-new, and they kind of agreed to split the, you know, the responsibilities of this, so they're kind of working together. And when we met with them in the fall, they, they were energetic, but obviously new to this position. So I think they have some, you know, learning to do in terms of fundraising and so forth like that. And we kind of got the feeling from them that they were on a limited budget, so to speak. So they have a lot of ideas, but I don't know that their fund balances cover all their ideas, including this resurfacing. So I think that's part of the reason they were coming to us, asking us if, you know, we would help. And then they brought up some points that it is part of the park, you resurface tennis courts, you resurface basketball courts, you know, and nobody looks for basketball players or tennis players to help out with that necessarily. And they were just wondering why pickleballers would be separated from that idea.
Well, I think their area is unique to them. It's a little bit different.
They have a lot of people playing.
Yeah, there are lots of people who are interested in it. In fact, there are people who have asked for more pickleball courts.
Oh, yeah, I'm well aware of that.
All over it, I think that'd be great, keep everybody moving. I guess my opinion would be, they're going to have to raise some funds. But the township may be able to help them if you're just taking the temperature.
Yep.
Steve?
Are the courts ours?
The courts ours, yes.
So I don't see the difference, basketball courts for basketball players.
We have to go back to the history. We started out with a, a small project, and they wanted it larger. They wanted more courts than we originally planned.
So they requested the increase.
And they paid for it.
Is that the old tennis courts down there that were revamped?
Yep.
Okay.
And then they essentially control half of the courts for half the day. They do the scheduling and things like that. So it's a, you know, it's a public-private.
So in that half a day that they're scheduling, it's off-hand for any public to come in and use it?
I think it's half the courts, so.
Yeah, they can't reserve all the courts, they have to leave some courts available for public play.
So it's a, it's a little more complicated than just a.
Yeah, so it's not just a freebie, bring your basketball and go in the basketball hoop and shoot. It's more of, they've got it tied up partly.
Well, anybody can get on the reservation system and make reservations for a court. So it's not like it's, you know, just TAPA that's.
It is a unique relationship.
Yeah.
You know, there's no, they use the baseball field for Little League, but it's not funded by Little League. But they, you know, they help maintain it, and they put down the chalk and it's, there's, it's just a little more complicated.
I'm just thinking, because I was doing some research on the sidewalks and their liability, if this is owned by the township, are these cracks significant? Are they dangerous? Because if it is our pickleball court, and we know about these defects, and somebody gets hurt, you can actually be held liable for it. So I don't know how severe these.
I don't think they're that severe. Actually, I think.
Two inches is the rule.
Two inches wide or offset height?
Yeah, horizontal or vertical, either way.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything like that.
Okay, so just saying, if we know about it.
We were noticing, we were actually noticing some cracking in the resurfaced tennis courts at Silver Lake, and, which was just done last year, essentially. And when we were discussing this with the pickleball guys, that it didn't sound like the cracking was, you know, that drastic per se. And it's not that, it doesn't meet those requirements at Silver Lake either. But the heaving, or potential for heaving and cracking at Silver Lake is probably more possible than it is at Boardman River Valley because, or at the pickleball courts, because that temperature at Silver Lake is, you know, changing to the point where things, the ground freezes solid. And that water table is so high there that I think that there is some heat, you know, despite the water being cold, that keeps things fairly thawed down there, you know, ground-wise. So I don't think that, you don't, you don't have that adjustment of, of freezing ground pushing things around versus just cold ground kind of settling.
Okay, and just one more thing, did they, I don't know if this is already talked about, sorry, but do they make any money off of this, the group?
They, I think they fundraised for, in a tournament, just for their organization, you know, for things like this. But I don't know how much, I couldn't comment on how much they actually make or don't make.
Okay.
That'd be a good question for TAPA.
Just thinking, it is a township asset that we're providing to a group that's using it. I feel like even though it is uniquely used, a lot of our residents are using it. So I, I would be in favor of at least contributing a little bit to it. I mean, it's our asset, it seems like, so I feel like we should maintain it. That's just my thought.
The property under that court was purchased with a DNR grant, which specifies that we won't charge anyone to use it. So I don't believe there's any profit to be made there.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I.
I mean, you were asking if they made any money.
If they make profit, yeah, and they're not, they're just using a public park for their club or their purpose.
Right.
So to me, like, if they were making money off of our property, they should resurface it, but they're not making any money. That's why I asked that, I guess.
I guess another question would be to kind of find out how many people down there that play are actually part of TAPA. Because it didn't, I think the last time I saw the TAPA membership numbers, I was surprised at how low it actually was. So I don't know if our user base is, you know, seventy-five percent non-TAPA and twenty-five percent TAPA. I don't know, I don't, that's just throwing that out for hypothetical, but, yeah, I don't know that.
Yeah, I get the feeling the board is receptive to the idea of cost-sharing and.
I'll let them know, and if they firm up some numbers and, and quotes, then they can come and speak to you directly. Does that sound good?
Maybe they can come and speak to the board.
That's what I mean.
There we go.
I meant you as a whole.
And actually, sorry, one more thing.
Yeah.
Should we be getting the bids for these as opposed to them, since it's not our property? I'm new at this whole thing, but it seems like we should be getting bids for resurfacing our court.
Well, I think they. Well, I think they started that ball rolling, 'cause they didn't know if they were gonna end up being the ones to pay for it. I think we can follow up with those companies and if there's other companies that come to mind that can do it, then we could follow up with them as well.
It just seems like bids, when you gather bids, you'd want somebody representing the township gathering those bids. Yeah. I don't, I don't know what you guys think of that.
I agree with you.
It seems a little, yeah, like, I don't, that just seems like common sense to me, but...
They've already got two, it looks like they're gonna try to obtain one more from downstate. And I think once the bids come in, Sean and Derek can...
Yeah, we can follow up with those.
Contact them and say, hey, did you guys cover the cracks? How are you gonna fill the cracks?
Right.
You know, are you gonna do any grinding? They can then take over on the obtaining of the, from the bids and get the detailed info, I would think.
Depending on where the board sits on funding, obviously. I mean, if it's only a small percentage, then I would say it probably is, you know, maybe more up to them. I don't know. But it is our property, so.
You know, the, you know, the board's interested.
All right, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Any further questions?
Good. Next item, I believe, is the clerk's report.
I've submitted the clerk's report in writing and Betty and I have been very busy with elections. We're waiting for the state to give us our forms, so we still don't have the forms for the absentee applications in our system. They said that if we wanted to, we could give them out to a vendor, 'cause they have them, but the state, that won't allow us to print them right out of our system. They don't have them up to date yet. So, they just gave us the ballot selection for the presidential primary last night that got sent to us. They finally got that form prepared. So, I've actually been talking to KCI, who does our tax forms. They have the forms ready. I'm gonna get a quote from them and see if it fits in with my budget and just move forward with it, 'cause we're still waiting for the forms from the state. Yeah.
Just a question for you. Is this the last year that you will fill out an application for an absentee ballot?
On the application is a box to check, that if you wanna get a permanent ballot, meaning that you just check the box and we will automatically send you the ballot. We don't recommend people that go away for the winter to do that, because it's gonna go to your home address, the address we have on file. And if you're changing your address and not notifying us, election mail will not forward. So, that will, that will come back to us and we're not gonna know you didn't receive it until it comes back. And, let's see, so this week, we received a voter ID card that we sent out in January of last year. We received it back in our mail that it was undeliverable this week. So, good luck with the ballots on that. I mean, we just don't know what's gonna happen. So, if you're home, you know, you want it to go to a permanent address, then absolutely check that box. We have to keep those applications indefinitely, we have to keep them on file forever. So, we don't wanna put the ballot selection on the same form, so there will be that. But otherwise, you can just keep requesting an absentee ballot, if you don't wanna do the permanent ballot.
That would be for every election?
Every election, you will just receive a ballot in the mail.
I would assume that's changeable down the road, if you just changed your mind. They'd contact you and say, take us off the...
Contact us and we could take it off that permanent ballot list.
You don't receive an application, you receive an actual ballot.
You receive an actual ballot.
Okay, even if, even if you died?
No, no, we're gonna try to take, we try to keep our, our dead notices up to date. We do, we do that on a daily basis. We get a, it comes through our system, we keep those up to date in our office. So, if we are notified that you have passed, we will not be sending you a ballot.
So, do you, are you, sorry, this was not on the agenda, but are you, I was just trying to think. Oh, are you on a, some kind of a computer system, so that if I go to Florida, I might get a ballot down there, I might get a ballot up here, but I'm not requesting? Are you on some national system that can check to see?
Yeah, so, we have had to actually send our applications to vote, where somebody has come in and voted in person and actually gone to another state and voted absentee or vice versa. We've actually had to scan those and go down and find the forms, which we keep for 22 months, and scan it and send it to another state. So, they're cracking down on the people that are doing that.
Okay, there is somebody watching the store.
There is somebody watching the store. And I know I saw in the newspaper where one of the commissioners was concerned that people voted in person and the early voting, and then they tried to do an absentee. Once you voted, it marks you, voted in our system. We cannot give you another ballot, we will not give you another ballot. If you've turned, if you go and vote in person, have already turned in your absentee application, when I go to receive it in, in my system, it, it will make it, it will not accept it. It will void it out. So, we're constantly, you're checking that.
Any other questions for our clerk? Next item is the supervisor's report. In addition to the milfoil on Silver Lake, they are interested in establishing a septic tank inspection program. They've talked to both Blairtown, Nikki from Blair, and myself, which gets real complicated with two communities and enforcement. There was a indication that the state legislature was going to pass a septic inspection law this last session, but that did not happen. It appears it will happen sometime in the future. So, there's still a conversation going on about whether it makes sense to pass a county-wide system. So, we're attempting to talk to our county commissioners and see if there's a support for it there, because the county already has a health department that monitors septic tanks and the construction and, but there are some that nobody knows what's underground. So, it's a...
Can I ask you about that before you move on?
Yeah.
So, are they talking point of sale?
Yes.
Septic inspection?
Yep.
Long Lake Township has had that.
Right.
And, and the deal is that you have to have somebody come in and inspect, it's, it would be, I would assume, an ordinance that we would pass that would say, in order for you to sell your property, you have to have somebody come in, which straight, somebody who does septic systems.
Right, unless you had an inspection within the last three years.
Right, and, and you pay, the person who's gonna sell pays.
I think that's negotiable.
It is negotiable, but most of the time. So, you know, I, I mean, it's, it's not like the township would have to hire somebody to do those inspections.
Yeah, I, they're, they do enforce it. I don't know what the process is, but it is, at some point. They work with the health department right now.
Right. Well, the title companies know, if you close a house in Long Lake Township, you have to have that.
Yep.
Oh, and if we did it, it'd be the same.
Right.
Not everybody's in favor of that, so.
No, I understand.
A little public hearing.
Yep. Let's see, yeah, I mean, there's, there is an indication that there's gonna be a state law eventually. Michigan is the only state in the United States that doesn't have a septic tank inspection law. So, sooner or later, it's gonna happen. They want it to happen sooner, so.
Is it just the tank or is it the whole system?
It's essentially the whole system, but you, you begin by looking at the tank.
Right, and then is there a drain field or is it bottomless?
Right, what's there?
Right.
A dry well, they call it.
Yeah.
Yep. So, that was a, that's the conversation that's going on. Our, our MPO met the other day and agreed to hire a manager who has got a pretty good background. He lives here in town, so he has a place to live. That's good news, 'cause that can be a barrier to hiring. He has experience with POs and planning and zoning and transportation of all sorts. So, we were, we were excited to find a good candidate and we're on our way. Went to the Builders Exchange Economic Forecast Breakfast, which was a little less upbeat than the Chamber of Commerce breakfast, but the gentleman felt that there's still gonna be a lot of supply issues and labor shortages and everybody's really, really busy now, but he felt like there were a lot of things that could go wrong in the next few years for builders. It was an interesting conversation. Met with Dr. Van Wagner from the school system and he is, they've expanded the Safe Routes to School program to high schools and they're interested in getting a route from West Senior High down Herkenner Road and then a connection over to Zimmerman Road. We have a lot of that in place already. So, we told them that, you know, Safe Routes to School pays for, in the past, I believe it's still the same, they pay for the construction and the local municipality pays for the engineering. We've done a couple of those in the past and we had intended on putting in a Safe Routes to School on Barlow and the city was running the program and just dropped our section with no notice to us or TART, who worked on setting it up. So, this would be an option to restart that. His staff would do the grant writing and then if that's approved, then we can take it from there. They're also interested in, they have a problem with kids getting across Frankie Road because the natural route that would make sense, Meyer doesn't want them to use. So, the, there's a, a bus stop in Meyer's parking lot for Beta that the kids can use to get there. And then, but typically that time of day when they're going to school is super high traffic. So, they're looking for a solution for that and they wanna use Safe Routes for that as well. That was an interesting conversation. I think it would work out very well. Friday, the three supervisors are meeting to review the candidates and Chairman White has recommended that we interview any candidate that all three of us want to interview. So, you know, any one of us could blackball an individual, but with 40, more than 40 applicants, it's a lot to wade through. So, we'll, we'll see how that works out on Friday. I'm still reading and watching interviews. Saw the letter from the Olson Foundation. That's been a process, but they are to the point where they realize that what they want to do is going to require water and they understand that, you know, the pipe is the responsibility of the developer. So, we're off the snide on that and moving forward, which is good news. GFL, it bought out American Waste and the Ash Owens were, I thought, very, very good stewards of our, you know, recycling and trash. They're, they sold out to GFL and said that their philosophy was very similar, but they've raised their rates kind of abruptly. And the last increase was to $20 a month. But in the process of changing the billing numbers, somebody checked the wrong box. So, it was $20 a month for trash and recycling. So, the three-month bill, which should've been 60, was 120. I got a lot of phone calls. I got, I had a lot of conversations with people and I talked to GFL and they were like, well, you know, we can't fix it here, you know, it's gotta come from headquarters. And I'm like, well, we need to do something. You know, we've been advised that people who pay the 120 won't be billed the next quarter. Or if anybody pays just the 60 right now, then they're not gonna be penalized. But it's, it's, you know, a few of people were concerned to the point where they were, they didn't realize that we didn't have a contract, you know, what we had did was a preferred vendor. So, there was, there are a number of people who are asking if the board would consider putting a contract out to bid for a single vendor.
Well, why could we not do the same process we did before? We have, select a different preferred vendor.
Yeah, that's possible.
Rather than tying us into it.
Yep.
It's, that company is a little strange, because I pay mine yearly.
Yep.
And I got a bill and I called them and I said, I pay yearly. She said, oh, you never paid yearly, that's not, and I said, yes, I have, I can give you the proof, you know? So, finally fighting with them for a while, they allowed me to pay yearly. So, I haven't gotten my bill yet, but my neighbors have gotten theirs and I said, call them.
Yep.
Yeah, it's gone up immensely.
And their, their service people are very polite and they, you know, they say, oh, no, we're not gonna bill anybody, you know, we don't wanna overbill people, we'll, we'll fix it eventually, but it's, there are a lot of people who are quite upset.
Yeah.
Well, what we're trying to avoid is having three different garbage companies going down the street and when people are not happy, if we can organize it in some way to give a benefit to people who live here, we did it before, maybe we can do it again.
Yep, I said, that's one option. The other option would be to do a single vendor.
Although I still have another company coming down my road to pick up garbage.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's less frequent. We have not said you have to use this company here, but preferred, give us a better rate. And American Waste did it before, so, maybe.
All right, well, we'll continue this conversation. I think, the only other thing I had on here was the thing about the sturgeon, but you've already heard that story.
Yeah, that's pretty interesting.
Yeah, it's, they said, they said it takes a long time to actually build up that body.
Twenty years, yeah.
Can you imagine going to the Boardman River and having a six-foot sturgeon?
That'd be cool.
We can get into the caviar business.
Yeah.
All right, so if there are no questions on the supervisor's report, we'll move on to unfinished business. And the first item is Item A, consideration of scheduling a public hearing on January 9th, 2024 for a special assessment role for Jefferson Road. You have the letter and you've heard Mr. Wade speak. My recommendation is that we do not schedule a public hearing at this time.
I agree, makes sense.
Do you want a motion to just table this indefinitely?
We will just, a motion to delay until they ask us to do differently.
Okay, I would make that motion that we delay until they request us to do something different.
Support.
We have a motion and two supports.
Three.
Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Next item, Item B, is consideration of an updated bid for a UTV purchase from Guinness.
There you go. Last month, you guys approved the purchase of the UTV for Parks for $10,811 from Guinness. The UTV model is no longer available this year and they cannot guarantee its arrival until... The UTV model is no longer available this year, and they cannot guarantee its arrival until, they said, April to June, and weren't even sure that they were going to get any of them in, because they're kind of flying off the shelves, I guess. Ginups did advise that they have an upgraded model for an additional $950, which is brush guard and upgraded tires and rims. And those have been selling rather quickly. Also, they told us they would hold one for us tomorrow, for tomorrow. And then that was, there was no guarantees after that.
I make a motion that we do it. Get it done right away, because you can't wait till June or July or August to get this. So I make a motion that we do the additional $950 to the upgraded UTV.
Support.
We have a motion and support from Chris. Any questions or comments? All right. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Cumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Augusta Nelly?
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Happy shopping tomorrow.
Do we get rides on it?
Can we have a ride?
Item C is consideration of options for the Boardman Lake Trail. This was, came up at a meeting a while ago, and the board asked to bring it back. So here we are. And we have two options. One is the original plan that was presented. The other option would be to go with the Safe Routes to School on the northern part of Barlow. There's a couple of reasons I think that would be an attractive option. One is it would free up some of the ARPA money for other projects. And the other one is there's, there were existing agreements to provide easements which would move the trail a little farther away from the street, which is easier to maintain and better for kids who are walking to school.
So I got a question.
Yep.
So I'm looking this over, and it looks to me like one of these is Airport Road
Yep.
by itself. And the other one is both Airport Road and Barlow. Is that, am I getting that right, or?
That would be, yeah, that's what we drew up originally. But, you know, upon further consideration, I think we should consider a Plan C, which would be to use the ARPA money to build from, I forget the name of the street, but it's the part that where the Safe Routes would end. And then, that would knock, I think about $30,000 off the cost of the project. And, Chris?
Makes a lot of sense to me. The only concern is, you know, will the projects be done around the same timeframe? Are you going to have a trail that runs from Logan's to Barlow a little bit north, and then pretty much dead ends for a year before that other project's done? Do you feel like they would be done around the same timeframe?
I think they could be done at the same timeframe.
I think that makes a lot of sense if you get that commitment, or that's the plan.
I agree.
Two questions. One is if we, if we do what you're mentioning, and think the Safe Routes to Schools is good, if that frees up some ARPA money, I would consider wholly putting it towards Jefferson to offset that increase in cost for that project, possibly, just a thought. The other one is, I'm reading one of our ordinances here, and when we build this, the owners of the properties that it goes on are responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of those trails. Is that? So if they sign an easement to allow us to do this, they're also agreeing to take over the maintenance and upkeep of that on their property. I mean, that's what it reads right here. "It shall be the duty of all owners of the premises within the limits of the township to keep all cement, asphalt, concrete sidewalks that have been laid in front of or upon adjacent to such premises." Basically, it keeps going on that they're responsible. So, when they give us an easement, are they being told that they're also responsible now for that piece of sidewalk, or trail, whatever we call it?
Well, when that easement discussion took place, that was, that did not exist. That was a modification to our zoning since that point in time, so.
So is it then the agreement is, are we going to hold them to the new one? Or are we going to hold them to the old standard?
Well, what we have now are agreements to provide easements. I don't believe the easements have actually been granted. So we'd have to, TART would actually go back and talk to them. And I think it would be incumbent on them to have that discussion, or for us to maintain the trail as we do the other Safe Routes.
That was, are you finished, Steve?
Yeah, that kind of answers my two.
Just, nothing against what you said about Jefferson, but you can't do it for one and not do it for everybody else. So we can't take that ARPA money and help them without helping somebody else in the near future. It's not going to be fair to all the other residents in Garfield Township. So I, we pay 25%. That's in our agreement. That's it. We can't go any higher, and we can't go any lower. So what I'm saying is, am I correct that you can, we cannot go any higher than that? But if we do that for one, we're going to have to be able to do it for another one then, too.
It has been our policy to do 25%.
Right.
Is it just the road, or are we doing sewer and water, too?
On Jefferson, it's just the road.
Just the road, okay.
But, and I agree with what you're saying about Safe Routes. I think if we can coordinate with them, and then get our portion done, too, with that ARPA money that we have, I say we go for it that way. You need a motion in that?
Could you repeat that?
Come on. I agree that we should go with the Safe Routes to Schools.
All right.
And then the extension that you're talking about, we will pay for that with the ARPA money.
Right.
Right, so I would agree with that completely, as long as we can coordinate it together to get it done at the same time.
That would absolutely be our intention, yes.
Now, the other question is, do you need a motion to that?
Yeah, I would.
I would make a motion that we go with the Safe Routes to School, and then continue the others with the ARPA money that we have set aside for that project.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Questions or comments?
Yeah.
Chloe?
The two proposals here, neither one of them represent that idea. So do we need a new proposal from Gordy Frazier? Or can we use, can she do this whole proposal, and the funding doesn't matter at this point in time? Maybe Jennifer can answer that, because neither one of these proposals match that proposition.
Well, that was my question, too, Chloe. I mean, because we can have, Chuck and I had discussion about it. So I mean, we can, right here, you know, just make amendment. I just wanted to know, to clarify with you, Chuck, to what road are we talking about along Barlow? We're not at Premier Street. We're a little further north than that, right?
Look at the packet.
I think it's.
We added a, there's a sheet, and it has a map.
Oh, I should pull up the packet. That would probably be helpful.
Glade Wood.
Okay.
Yeah. It's Glade Wood. It's, it's basically.
Glade Wood, okay.
Boone to Glade Wood on Barlow is the Safe Routes to School section.
Chuck is right, we did talk it, so we're, we're probably talking from the original proposal you guys saw at the meeting, probably about a 30% reduction is right within, that would be extremely reasonable. So I can amend that and get that to Chuck. I guess it's up to this board. One thing I wanted to answer to trustee Barshaf's question and the rest of this board, I understand what you're trying to accomplish with Safe Routes. They don't cover design services, so that would fall under your purview, so that, that would be what we would be working on now. And the nice thing with the weather, we still have ability to go out and survey, which is always a gamble. But as far as timing for construction, just like anything else, we have several projects that we shelf. And so they're just ready. They're permitted, they're ready to be built, so we can coincide that when Safe Routes does, when they, being very optimistic, when they grant funding. And we can coincide it, so it would work out very well. So the design would be done. I think is, to speak for you, that's the intention, correct?
That is exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, so, however you guys want to handle it. But I can easily tomorrow amend the budget. But yes, you guys would be looking at about a 30% reduction.
I think Molly had a question.
Well, one thing, so are you saying, are we going to have different costs than what we have here? Because it's a little different. I'm just reading this and added up the numbers. I think you're like $95,000 to do the.
Full, before, yeah. That was the full route. And now it looks like we're going to Gladwood.
Glade Wood.
Glade, excuse me.
All right, so there's going to be an added cost to the township, because we're going to be handling the engineering part of it, right? We're handling the engineering part of setting up this Safe Routes to Schools, the whole thing.
Yeah, but I mean, this, that's still the same design process, regardless.
In both cases, we're doing the engineering.
Right. It's.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at the $95,000, is that, I mean, this.
But we're shortening up the route on Barlow. I would have to look at what was in the packet, but it sounds like the route on Barlow's getting shortened up a bit. Is that correct?
But primarily, the construction costs will be less, because.
Engineering will be the same. Engineering's the same.
Engineering should be very similar.
Oh, I missed, I didn't look at the board packet, sorry.
Construction will be different, as far as the cost.
Safe Route pays for the construction, but not the engineering. So irregardless of who pays for the construction, we still pay for the engineering.
Right, so the engineering will be the same.
Oh, we're doing the same route, yes, so it, the, yes.
Just, just a little bit.
Yeah.
A little, little bit more.
A bit farther away from the street.
Yeah, yeah, so the alignment has shifted. So the engineering would be the same. So the $95,000 would still be appropriate, yeah.
And, and some change, but yeah, 95, 250 or something, yeah. Okay.
So back to my original comment, Chuck, about the owners of the properties. Do we need to obtain approved assess, I'm losing my train of thought. Easements on these properties, making them aware of this before we kick off engineering on something that may have a dead trail partway through it?
Yeah, so the people at TART who secured the agreements to provide easements are still there. The same people. They are, they are willing to go back and refresh those agreements. If the discussion takes them where they're not going to sign them if they have to clean them, then we will, as a board, make a decision at that point in time. But if we build within the road right of way, we're going to be cleaning it anyhow.
And the South Airport one, are both, both of them are going to be in the right of ways?
The South Airport one will not be in the right of way.
Okay.
Those are pretty much all commercial.
So before we kick off, Jennifer, on any engineering, we're going to make sure we have these easements obtained, and that they're aware of this statement at our new ordinances?
Correct.
Okay. Because this will come into play, right, what I read here?
And I have already talked to TART, and they're.
They're good with it.
That's their, that's their.
That's how they sell stuff.
That's what they do.
Okay. They can sell whoppers, and we worry about the funds.
Right.
Okay.
And the french fries.
And the french fries, all right.
The real selling point to those landowners along there is the benefit that this trail is going to provide for them, running a sidewalk by, just the increase in property value. So hopefully.
Exposure.
Everybody will want.
Do we resend the motion then, and just wait till Jennifer comes back with an updated document then, or?
I think we can start this process, you can write a proposal for the realigned trail. Then we can act on the proposal once we know that we have an agreement with the property owners.
Sounds good.
So your motion was to just move forward with it?
Safe Routes to School and enough.
I think with the concept.
And then Jennifer's going to bring us back the new.
Proposal.
Proposal.
I think we understand.
Well, that works out great.
Got a felt-tip marker over there, and she's doing her own.
Yep. Well, and the nice thing, I have already obtained from the city what they did have, and shared that with staff and the supervisors. So where at least they ended, we have all that information, and they're willing to share. It's conceptual still what they had, but feedback that they got from some of the property owners, Rogue's mission, they're conceptual layouts. We did receive that information already, so that helps us. All right. Have a good foot in. Well, exciting.
So on the motion, for the second, are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are on to Item D, Public Hearing, Garfield Township Budgets for 2024, the General Fund, Fire Fund, Public Improvement Fund, Budget Stabilization Fund, DVW Fund, Park System Fund, Streetlight Fund, and Special Assessment District Fund. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak to our budget for 2024, please be so kind as to come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
I have my own now.
There'll be another public hearing at, oh, you can speak now if you want to on the budget. Okay, then there'll be another public hearing at the end of the meeting. All right. Last chance, Pat. All right, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. We will go on to new business. Item A, Discussion of Draft 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
Sure. So I think the board has had a chance to look at the capital improvement plan, the draft, that I worked with Jennifer on, that kind of combines all the different capital projects that the township has. And the purpose, this is really just a tool to help evaluate capital projects, to organize them, to anticipate them. It's not intended to bind the township board in any ways, but it's really kind of gives some guidance in terms of what those capital projects are, to assure that you have funding available. It also helps you to evaluate whether you want to fund a project. I would use the example of what you just had earlier this evening regarding the resurfacing of the courts, for the pickleball courts. That could be referred to the CIP Committee, which would then vet that and then provide that recommendation to the board. It would, the CIP is to list those projects to ensure that they meet the priorities of the township board, make sure that there's appropriate funding, et cetera, that's in there. So it's really just essentially an ongoing project list. It's intended to be done primarily before you go through the budget process, but it can be amended at any time during the year. It's just kind of that way of going through that CIP Committee initially, and then that CIP Committee, which is kind of recommended in here. It's basically the Township Supervisor, Township Clerk, Township Treasurer, along with staff, that would be that, kind of reviewing those and making recommendations to make the changes to the CIP Plan to the Township Board. I just had them in my cover memo. It's usually broken down by different subjects. So you have things, like we talked about the water and sewer. Even though there's different funding sources for those, it gives you really kind of the ability to scan and look at all of the investments that you're making into the township. There are things that qualify what is actually qualified as a project. So in this case, in the way this is drafted out, it's for any type of capital project of $10,000 or more. You can adjust that language in any way that you need to. There's also the reference there, just so you know that it's in there, that says that it doesn't, it's really a planning tool, so it doesn't really mean that the township has to fund any project that's listed in the CIP. And it's adjusted on an annual basis, so that it's, because it's always looking out five to six years, so it can be adjusted, so that you can anticipate future expenditures. Stuff that you may say, "Well, we're not really going to do that now. We're going to, you know, maybe do that in five, six years." You can at least put that on the list, and that can always be adjusted at any given time. And as like I mentioned, it gives you an opportunity to vet a project, so that, you know, particularly, there may be something. And as like I mentioned, it gives you an opportunity to vet a project so that, you know, particularly there may be something that somebody comes in front and is making a request and you may evaluate it and say, well, that really doesn't fit our priorities and it's not something that we want to fund. So this is kind of a brief overview. It's just a mechanism to identify those projects.
I think this is great. Thank you. I really appreciate it. To look at the future and what we have and. So you don't need a motion on this, right? This is just something that we're gonna.
Yeah, and if anybody has any changes they'd like to see or any comments, then you can share them now or you can share them with planning staff in the future. Molly?
Is there a way to designate which of these projects is gonna be out of a general fund? And which of these we have potential other sources? I know we can't really identify what those sources are right now because things might change, but.
Right. So you have, so this is looking, this CIP is basically looking over six years. So you have your current budget year. So that tends to be, those are the projects that are gonna be most accurate and identify what those sources of funding are gonna be. And it should identify whether it's gonna be general fund, whether it's gonna be a grant or whatever that is. The other ones that are the following subsequent ones, those can maybe identify that, but don't necessarily have to be always to say specifically because those will always adjust. You adjust this on an annual basis before you go through and it's really just the ones that are in the current budget year that you want to make sure those are accurate.
Okay, I see it now. Thank you.
Wonderful. That's wonderful. And just to look at it and see it on paper and know what's going on.
I think it's wonderful, too.
Yep, it is. It is.
I think it's been really helpful working with Jennifer on that so you can, you know, a lot of those are, for like the water and sewer projects, have their funding sources, but when you lay it out there, it really gives the sense of the investment being made in the community significantly.
Right. Great job.
Well, unless somebody else wants to rev it up. Okay, we will move on to item B, new business, consideration of resolution 2023-37T.
Laney's already looking at me, shaking her head.
The general fund 2024 budget.
Alright. I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-37T, the general fund budget.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? We have a roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
And Corn.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-38-T, the 2024 fire fund budget.
Support.
We have a motion and support on the fire fund budget. Any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
And Corn.
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-39-T, public improvement road fund budget.
We have a motion on the public.
We don't have a support yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Support.
Who was that? Bye, Laney. We have a motion and support on the public roads budget. Any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
And Corn.
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-40-T, the budget stabilization fund budget.
Support.
On the motion for the budget stabilization fund budget, we have a motion and second, are there any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-41-T, the DPW, 2024 DPW fund budget.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-42-T, the 2024 park system fund budget.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
Make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-43-T, the 2024 streetlight fund budget.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Was that McManus?
McCumber.
Molly.
McCumber. Oh, Agustinelli.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
I make a motion we adopt resolution 2023-44-T, which is the assessment district fund budget for 2020, excuse me, the 2024 special assessment district fund budget.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-45T, the township clerk's salary.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Barsheth.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
He answered for me.
I know. I know.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-46-T, the township treasurer's salary.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
And Corn.
Yes.
Do I have to do this one?
No.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-47T, the township supervisor's salary.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
I have to ask them every year, you know. I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-49T, the township trustees' salary.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
I make a, I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-48T to adopt the annual exemption option as set forth in the 2011 Public Act Number 152, the Publicity Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
And Corn.
And.
Yes.
I'm done.
The next item is consideration of the township's liability insurance renewal plan. And Laney, would you like to take the lead on this conversation?
No, not really. It's our annual, it's our insurance that we need for our liability. It went up a little bit because we've had several claims on it recently. So we had a flood in our supervisor's office. We had one of our employees fall, and my election workers fall in 2022. So where we hadn't had any claims before, oh, and then we had somebody hit our pavilion at the park. Had any claims for years and all of a sudden we're on a roll. So it went up just a little bit for our claims, which was just three hundred and one dollars and ninety-one cents, so.
Do we need a motion on that? Or just a return of motion to renew it?
I think a motion to.
Renew it.
Renew it.
I make a motion that we renew our township liability insurance plan.
Support.
We have a motion and support to renew. Are there any questions or comments?
Is the, Laney, is the total then on the plan eighteen thousand eighty-one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Then a roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Barsheth.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Manus.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes. Alright, we are moving on to item P, as in Paul, consideration of 2024 board appointments. For the process, we have advertised and asked for new applicants. We've also asked all of our expiring or term-ending members if they would like to reapply. And for the most part, they have. I've spoken with the department heads and our recommendations are that we reappoint those members who have specifically indicated they want to, that have the experience and we're not really unhappy with any of them. We would like to see a new member on the building board of appeals. That's, we have that applicant here with us tonight who spoke earlier. Is, he has a background. I think we have engineers and architects. It'd be good to have a CPA in there to bring some common sense.
If we ever meet.
If we ever, yep, it could happen.
Been on that board for fourteen years, I think, and I don't know that we've ever met because we've never had the need. Carl handles it.
Yep.
So.
Well, he's retiring next year.
He's retiring.
Then maybe we'll be meeting.
It could be. We'll need some help, yeah.
And what these.
Basically, to reappoint everyone with the exception of the, who would like to have.
Can I have my pen back, please, sir? So I would make a motion that we appoint everyone that is listed here with the asterisks, including the new building code of appeals, Ben, and I'm not gonna say your last name because I might, to replace Peter Alt.
We have a motion?
Okay.
Support.
And we have support.
Is this for all the committees?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, welcome to Garfield. And.
I should make a comment that both of the people that were interested in serving on our boards, it was really outstanding information from them and good quality folks.
Thank you.
Keep it on file. You never know. Something could happen to a current board member and we need to call them and say, hey, can you step in?
Absolutely.
I was impressed with them, too. I thought their resumes were impressive, very impressive.
Very impressive. All of them were.
They are very fortunate.
Absolutely, we are.
We are, because we could have had none, extras asking.
Alright, the last item on our agenda today, or on our new items, is the 2024 township board meeting dates.
We need a motion on that?
I have a question.
Certainly.
So on the February, we're meeting two weeks in a row. Is that because the February twenty-seventh is the election?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to point that out.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I better change it on my calendar.
I will not be available on the twenty-seventh if you decide to meet.
I understand.
Come on.
Steve, you tend to always be gone.
Neither will this room.
During the joint meeting.
Yeah, I would request the joint meeting be moved, as I've requested before from the last meeting of February, because I am always gone that meeting.
It's.
Yeah, the joint meeting is in March this year.
Perfect. I'll be there.
But we have the, on November twenty-sixth here and Thanksgiving is the twenty-eighth.
Right.
So we'll go ahead and just keep it if we have the business and.
If the situation rises where we need to meet, we can.
We can, otherwise.
If it's even one quick issue, we can.
So keep it on, keep it on right now, right?
Yep.
You don't want to meet Christmas Eve, I see?
No.
Nah, I think it's a little tacky.
Alright, okay.
Alright, so if there are no objections, we will adopt the meeting dates as presented.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we meeting on the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Of this month? Because it's on our, it's on our schedule that we adopted last year.
Yep, I have a feeling that we are not.
Okay, but right now we're keeping it on until we hear it differently.
Yeah.
In case something comes up.
Okay. We'll keep it on and then.
Every once in a while, something.
Absolutely. I figured by the end of the year, something might come up. So keep it on. Don't take it off, Denise.
Alright, now that brings us back to public comment. Lufar.
Scott Rokus at sixteen seventy-three Cass Road. I just wanted to bring to your attention a problem I've been dealing with for about half a decade now, six years maybe. It's been a neighbor I've had and, but I still have, and me and your assessor, Amy, and a couple of my other neighbors have been wrestling with this woman and the township's just failed us. We can't get anywhere with her. So I just want to give you a couple of high points because she's so much more than a hoarder of what we've been dealing with and what I plan to do about it in the spring. And when I say what I plan to do about it, I am gonna do this. I expect to get cited by the township for doing it because I've tried every other avenue for half a decade and haven't gotten anywhere. But if I get treated any differently than this woman, there'll be, there'll be legal trouble, I'm probably guessing. So here's some of the things I've had to deal with. This woman against ordinance, and again, I have a five-year-old and a three-year-old little girl. She's had, this guy must have been a schizophrenic living in a tent in the winter, screaming vulgarities at animals, including the F-bombs and other kinds of words. My kids go to a Catholic school, you know, we try to avoid stuff like this. She had a man and a goat living together in an eight-by-twelve shed. Different farm animals against ordinance. Her place, it looks like God took his hand, grabbed a pile of junk from the landfill and let it go over her house. Your assessor worked with me and the township and did a time-lapse photography of from when she took the place over until recently to show how it's, well, not progressed, but regressed, I guess, and to how bad it is now. She lives right next to the conservancy in the borders of Wetlands, right? She's had the trash strewn all over the railroad tracks, right there by Cass Road. She's got an easement that goes over that. The ten to twenty-five cats she's had in her small house, that her kitchen she uses as a chicken coop. I could smell her house from the, from the road. That's all her business. I got it. Then during the warm months, she lets some of her animals die. She's got hordes of geese, chickens over there. She lets them die. And I asked her why she doesn't pick these animals up from her property. What she does, she explained to me, is she lets these animals rot and then she lets flies land on them and lay maggots. So then her chickens and stuff eat the bugs. Now, my question is, is that a disease issue? Because she's fifty yards away from. Because she's 50 yards away from my doorstep. Things hit ahead when, a couple of years ago, she had a guy move in there, a 30-foot trailer, again, against ordinance. I noticed, because I'm an alert guy, that I have a window peeper, someone was looking in my windows at night. So I thought, well, who's new to the area? And it was him, so I did a search on the sex offenders registry, and he popped. He was a two-time rapist who took a B and E, and I read the court transcripts, because I work downtown, they were ugly. He had a, he was on parole at the time, he had a bracelet on his ankle. And she moved this guy across the street from my two little girls and my wife. Now, I'm in the military, I'm gone over two weeks in the summer, I'm gone two or three weeks, or two or three days a month, and I go to leadership schools occasionally. I've gone a lot. My wife was terrified, because as, the one good thing the township did is we got him out of there quick. But on the way out, while I was at Camp Grayling, he managed to scream across the road and threaten my wife. So I had to get locks for my doors, I had to get trail cams, I had to get motion lights, and I had to get a couple more guns for the house. Then, just when you think she can't get weird enough, because she's a hoarder, she hoards animals, trash, and weird people, she decided to save these, these little bunnies that you get at the store, right? The same bunnies you pull out of a hat, the kids get for pets, they're fuzzy little different colored buddies, bunny, she got a bunch. Well, of course, she didn't take care of them, they got out. In the spring, they do what bunnies do. It's cute, right? You go out there, your kids see hundreds of little different colored bunnies running all over the place. Amy had them in her yard, neighbors everywhere had bunnies in their yard. Well, for whatever reason, these little bunnies like to congregate on the side of the road at night, and then I come, then they like to sit in the road at night, I think it was because the asphalt was hot. Well, Cass Road's a drag strip, guess what happens? Then it got to a point, for about two months, I had to leave a shovel on my porch when I woke up in the morning, so my kids didn't see it, I had to go down to my driveway, scoop up messes and piles of gristle and bone and fur, and huck it in her driveway. And I had to do that from July to August. Now, why she doesn't get cited for cruelty to animals, because those are her pets, I don't know, the few bunnies that made it probably died, they died, there's none left, they, you know, the cold got them. Now lately, she, she got these dogs, she's got these 210, 120-pound Great Pyrenees dogs, you know, those great big white ones you see in the cartoons with the barrels under their necks, they're huge dogs, they're nice dogs. Every second of every day, I'm not exaggerating, every second of every day, I'm in my front yard or my driveway, those dogs can see us, they bark, they bark constantly, because they don't get any attention, they're nice dogs, they just bark. I feel sorry for the dogs, right? If I'm in my backyard, it's after 10 o'clock, that's the ordinance, I try to have people over for a beer or wine, those dogs hear something, they bark. It's July, I'm on the phone with a friend from Grand Rapids, those dogs are barking across the road in my driveway, my friend asks me, whose dogs are those? I know you don't have any dogs. In the warm months, I can't have my windows open, my kids had to have sound machines in their rooms to drown out those dogs so they can sleep. Just last week, the middle of winter, I have to have my, I can't sleep, because through a closed window, I can hear those dogs. So when the rest of you can enjoy your open windows in the warm weather, I pay my taxes, I can't have my windows open, because those dogs... Now, with that rapist, I talked to her, because back when we were getting along, because she, you know, she needed, I used to give her 50 bucks every Christmas. Her, her water pump went out, I used to let her come over and get water from me, I helped her. So I said to her, Suzie, why are you doing this to me? You know, I'm all about redemption, I'm all about second chances, but I've got two little girls and a wife here, why are you moving this guy next to me? She told me to pound sand. Then I sent her a letter about these dogs, I said, you know, these dogs are a problem, they bark all night, and I couldn't figure out why she was putting up with it, how can you sleep? I can't sleep across the road, and then I, I figured it out just recently, because I'm an idiot. Well, she's got these animals, and because she lives next to the swamps and the wetlands, the raccoons and the coyotes come, and she used to have me come over and shoot those animals for her. Well, now with those dogs there, she wants the dogs to bark all night, because it keeps the animals away from her chickens and geese, so she's never getting rid of those dogs. The people next to me have filed an, filed a complaint, I've filed a noise complaint. Six years later, I haven't gotten anywhere. So here's my plan, I'm going to keep looking on Facebook Marketplace to find those old used speakers that are four foot tall, I'm going to run an extension cord to my porch with a timer, and every 45 minutes or something between 10 o'clock until the next morning, I'm going to run those speakers out to the edge of the road, and I'm going to blast her with music. Now, I learned this from, we do this in Iraq, psychological warfare, we, we, we run Metallica and other things into those neighborhoods to drive those people crazy, I'm doing that to her. I'll get cited, the neighbors will cite me, maybe if the press picks this up, I'll get some movement, I don't know what else to do. Sorry, I pay my taxes, I follow the law, but I've got a family to protect, I've got stuff to take care of, and that's the way it is. Thanks for your time.
There is a, there was an agreement reached with the court that she would sell the property and move, which she didn't do. And we asked the court what they were going to do about it, they said, it's a civil matter, you'll have to file in a higher court. So the last I heard, the attorney had filed, this was a couple of months ago, but it hasn't been scheduled yet.
Can I approach again on that, please?
No, no, you're done.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, we're going a little over three minutes, because...
There's a lot there.
Yeah. But it's a, Derek and Sean and Mike have all worked with Amy, they're all, I mean, everybody is on the same page, there's nobody wanting to keep her there. We have done what we can do to move her along, but it is, our court system is challenging.
It's just sad that he has to put up with that, you know?
Absolutely.
Sad.
Is there an animal cruelty issue that could come out there?
That has to go through the police agencies.